You all communicated that and clarified some of these things.
Yes, and actually, we did talk with them yesterday regarding some of these same issues, wondering, you know, what was permissible and not. So that's why we're asking Mr. Webb is coming out. And have he already coordinated that with you and Mr. Smith and you and Mr. Webb?
Well, I don't know about Mr. Smith, but we had planned on meeting him before Christmas, and he wasn't able to. So we were supposed to meet this week. Of course, he wants to be there for the students, but parents pulling him and all that. So I haven't been in touch with him this week.
Okay, so he would have to come different times? Like if he would have to be at Midway at one sometime?
Probably two separate days.
Right, and then at Gondeling West Ham. Okay.
Yeah, I've never quite understood these rules because back, Larry, I know members at Griffithsville, we used to have lights when I was principal there, and we were required to take them, we had to take them down. And we protested and everything else, and somebody came from the DOH out and met with me and the, I guess, the PTO president or somebody. But we were told we weren't allowed to have them, we didn't meet the criteria. So they took the lights out at Duval. And now we've fortunately gone back, so I don't know whether all of it was intended for that. Okay, if there's nothing else on that, we will go into the administrative section. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Ms. Smith makes a motion. Oh, sorry, it would be Mr. Curry. Trish.
Okay. Item A, an out-of-county student transfer for the remainder of our 2013-2014 school year. Item B, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as best, if check rose, will provide transportation for students to and from athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, who have provided proof of private vehicle liability insurance and have completed volunteer orientation. Item C, as requested by the Lincoln County High School student class, to change graduation from Saturday, May 31st, to Friday, May 30th, 2014, at 6:30 PM to be held at the Lyons, Club Field, and Hamlin, weather permitting. Item D, to accept a bid and award a contract to exact time innovation totaling $45,091.13 to provide job clock, X, whatever that is, including all hardware and software, system installation, setup, internet training, and annual software upgrades and technical support. It's paid for out of the capital transportation funds. Item E, a contract with RUSA2 for collection of tuition and payment for two spring 2014 English cohort students from January the 2nd through May 31st, 2014. Item F, out-of-state travel for the following personnel, Ashley Butler to Indianapolis, Indiana, from January 28th through the 30th, 2014, to attend the Agricultural Education Summit, that's paid for through state grant funds. Item G, authorization for Bose Rights to investigate and take any steps necessary, including instituting litigation in any appropriate court against any and all appropriate parties to obtain relief from the projected shortfall in sums to be received as a result of the federal monetary monitor and collect property tax assessments.
Mr. Priestley, I would like to-
Yes, sir.
...present you, President of the Board, a letter. Dear Mr. Priestley, the purpose of this letter is to inform you of my intent to resign as a member of the Lincoln County Board of Education effective January the 8th, 2014. I have thoroughly enjoyed my tenure as a board member over the last two years. I am thankful to have had the opportunity to serve with all of you. I wish you and the members of the Lincoln County Board of Education all the best, and if I can be of any assistance to you in the future, please let me know.
Everyone, please add that as item H, please. Representation of Board Member Gary McCalister with effective date of January the 8th, 2014 as item H, our agenda. Now, is there any discussion about any of the items in the administrative section? Anyone? Mr. Donahue.
Yeah, just two questions on item G. Trish, is the authorization for legal proceedings or whatever, is that with Marangalia and Wyoming, or is it?
We have for today.
Okay. And the second question is, as I reported today, Josh seems to, the assessor Bronfield is of the impression that his average market, average market value will reach 90 percent, will reach 92 percent this year. But does that stop you guys from doing what you have to do regarding the budget?
No, it doesn't.
You still have to do that?
We still have to.
I dare you, yes.
You got it.
Possibly, be in my opinion.
Okay.
And I'm, because Trish isn't aware of probably what you've seen there, and I've tried to do a little, I've talked with the assessor to try to understand this whole process, how it works, and when the timeframe happens. But if Lincoln County is in compliance with this by June, June the 30th, if we're in compliance with the 90 percent, there will not be a penalty. And when I read what Sean had put in the newspaper there, I think Josh had projected what 92 something was in the journal. That if that's true, I mean, once again, if there aren't any guarantees that it's going to be 92, but because what we have to recall and remember is not, even if the figures come out from the Tax Department being above 90 percent, there's always the Board of Equalization that any of us can go before and say, mine's wrong, and decrease it. So if enough people did that, even if it were above 90 percent, it could come back down below it if Board of Equalization, the county commission acted that way. Not that they will, but I'm just saying. So I just food for thought here that we certainly may have to take this action, but as far as the, whom we want to institute to begin doing it, and I think it would be, it would be talk to those other counties and, you know, to see if they would be on board should we go that route. But I guess from the conversations I had with the assessor and looking into this a little bit, and when I read what Sean said today, that if all that proved to be true, that Lincoln County would not get penalized.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I still have to go forth with my personnel decisions because of the timeframe. I, the timeframe for knowing whether there's going to be that penalty is past the time that we have to make our decisions regarding personnel.
Oh, I agree with regardless either way.
Right.
I understand.
And that's what I was saying.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, there, and it's what I'm, I think sometimes when laws like this are passed, they don't realize the implications it has. And like you say there, that you have to plan and recommend to the board, the worst-case scenario, we're going to lose this and, you know, so we can't. And if things work out well, then you have to back up. So they don't realize the personnel movement here.
Right.
And all the hearings that might be necessary, and transfers, and riffs, and everything else that could potentially happen. And then if the monies aren't taken away from us, then you've got to go back and retract all that, which is probably hard, as hard to do as to do in the first place. So I'm certainly-
I can't even imagine.
Yeah, but I'm not disagreeing with you. I understand, all I'm saying is that you have to go ahead on the personnel side, I think, and act as if this, we're going to lose the money.
Yes.
There's no question about that.
Yes.
We all understand. All I'm saying is, at some point, when do we say we want to actually have Bose Rights to begin to initiate action and begin us paying them? You know, we want to, I don't know, because I, once again, this, this last day or two, I've understood this more.
Since this litigation would probably involve the State Tax Department, Ms. Tender called us on the phone the other day that by law, she would have to give them 30-day notice of pending litigation. So she has to give them warning that there's going to be a lawsuit against them. And we couldn't move forward with anything until 30 days.
Well, does she not have to get permission to sue them, in other words?
Well, yes, she was waiting until the board voted to not.
Yeah.
No, I mean, she has to get permission from the Tax Department to sue them.
Well, no, well, I don't think she has to get through. She had to get your approval tonight, and then she has to, she'll notify them tomorrow or whenever appropriate, that, and she will call, she said she would call the other two counties. Ms. Lucas has already given them heads up, but she will call them. And Bose Rights will represent all three counties in this action. And of course, she left this a little vague, I'm not sure what, maybe she's not sure what court it would be in. I'm sure she'll have to hit, she'll just move it all to right, but so if nothing will happen for 30 days.
Correct. Well, maybe in the way she words what she phrases to them, it's going to be that, you know, that we might take legal action or something, because if I'm not mistaken, somewhere I've heard that maybe in mid-February is when the Tax Department has to advise the assessors of what the final numbers are. Because what we've got from the Department of Education-
Right.
-but ultimately, you know, it's the Tax Department that makes this decision. So I mean, I don't know how Joe Panetta got here.
They got it from the Tax Commission.
But what they don't, and I'm talking about somewhere really, not that, don't understand it, but see, is potentially what Joe Panetta has got from the Tax Department, that can change. That can change. And I think that's what Sean has alluded to in his, like in his article today, that in his latest conversation with the assessor, he says that he projects it's going to be 92 percent this year. And if that's the case, then we would be penalized. So, just saying, we want to, whatever action we take legally, if we're required to do it, you know, we're going to have to do it, but it's not going to affect what the superintendent has to do. She's going to do her personnel things anyway. Because there's always a possibility, all maybe remote, that the legislature could act and change the, revise the law. You never know. But still, Trish has to do the personnel things, but that would prevent us from having any action against us. But I'm just saying that maybe, what do you all think, if just Rebecca Tender to just advise that, you know, if there's a potential for us to sue them 30 days or something, I don't know how to frame it, because until we know that-
Well, I mean, we could ask her to change the language a little bit.
Well, I mean, I was reading this earlier because to see if this binds us to do anything, but it says to take any steps necessary. You know, to me, that's pretty open to where it may be that we have to do something, or maybe we don't really have to. But all I'm saying is that if we go ahead and maybe in 30 days, that would be about the time, I think, when maybe they'll get the final numbers, that maybe she could go ahead and do that, and kind of lay the groundwork, and then if that way, if we were over the 90 percent, or under the 90 percent, then she could proceed. I just want to, you know, see what you all think. I just want that there's a potential that we would not be penalized. Now, does that mean that next year you could be penalized, or maybe the year after, or some other counties are going to be penalized? You know, that's still on the books, so the law is not a good one. If we're going to penalize it, you need somebody in the school board regardless. But I'm just, after, you know, finding out more here in the last few days about how this works, because I really wasn't sure when the timer ended and when the 90 percent was affected, but I didn't really understand all that. So I just went up and asked the assessor and had him complain with him, and that's what he told me yesterday, that it was whatever it's going to be by June the 30th. Now, I didn't, he wasn't-
By the June 30th, 13 or 14?
14.
Of 14.
If our, if they get the appraisals above the 90 percent mark by June the 30th, there would not be a penalty for us. Or any other county, but I mean, if they, we don't know what the other counties are going to do, and what they have to do to the other two counties.
But right now, we just want to have them know that if this goes through, we're not going to talk this much.
Right. Right, and once again, it's, even if we dodged the bullet this year, which would be great if we could, it could always tell you as long as it stays on the books, but I don't know if it's really our responsibility to get removed if we're a party being penalized as we think. But, you know, I'm just saying, how much legal funds do we want to expend when it might not even affect us? But, so what do you all think? I mean, can we do it in such a way as what Brenda mentioned, that Rebecca Tender is going to contact, notify these, well, I guess, talk to the other two counties, and notify the Tax Department that there's a potential for a lawsuit or something? And then maybe by the time the 30 days or whatever expires, we'd know more to whether we're still the correct party. I don't know if I'm confusing everybody or not.
Well, when is February up to with now? You said in the document we know something.
Well, because I think that's when the State, the Tax Department, I'm expecting, you know, but, yeah, slightly, it's just been the exact date for it, because I'm not sure. But it seems to me like if someone has told me that in mid-February is when they get them, they know for sure what it's going to be. But I could be wrong about that.
It's closed this year, though.
It might be here, I don't know. I don't know, but that's somewhere I've heard that in February is when they would know if they're going to penalize, you know, who's, the three counties are going to be penalized, or have those three counties taken some kind of actions through the assessor's office to get the rate of where it should be, and therefore you don't get penalized. But I could be wrong on that date for it, I'm just saying, that's what I understood to be. I don't know whether Josh had to say anything to you about that.
No, just what Gary said about the books being closed in February sounds, sounds familiar from last year, that that's-
Okay. So that may be what it is, but there's still the possibility that we would be penalized. But once again, does that affect you, Trish?
I don't, yeah, I know.
You've got to do your thing anyway.
It'd be great if we did prior to that.
Right, but we won't know, but, so for right now, is that the way we want to proceed? We'll just go ahead and act as we've written it here? Because I think it does give us some leeway, take any steps necessary, that may or may not be needed, man. And then you all can talk to us, and that's what we talked about, keep it advised, and we'll go from there. Okay, anything else on any of these items? If not, then I'll ask for a motion, all in favor of the administrative items?
Yes.
Carol, yours is a yes? That being all yes vote on administrative items then. Okay. Or Brenda? For the finance, he's not here.
He's out there talking about school buses.
Well, he's on smoke removal, right? I hear he-
Well, we need a good finance position.
He's jerky, he's too.
Don't tell him that.
I'm working about buses. How do you keep them moving?
Okay, Gary McCalister makes a motion. Could I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wilson makes a second.
All right, item A, scheduled invoices totaling $1,352,827.13, see attachment. Correct questions, and start again.
You're getting better at this all time, I feel. Any questions, or about the finance section? Is anyone else going to make some others made of our age and ask if we have any? All those in favor of the finance section?
Yes.
Yeah. All yes vote on finance. Okay, we'll go to personnel. Have a motion, Ms. Curry? Need a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Smith? Trish.
Section A is the employment of a substitute for short or a long-term professional personnel. Section B is employment of service personnel. Section C is temporary employment of service personnel pending the return of a regular employee. Section D is temporary transfer of service personnel pending the return of regular employee. Section E is the transfer of service personnel. Section F is reclassification of service personnel per West Virginia Code 1884-8. Section G is employment of extracurricular personnel. Section H, leave of absence. And then Section I, resignation and or retirement, and it's noted under effective date whether it is a resignation or retirement. And then abolish professional extracurricular posting. E, GV 14-15, Gondeling Middle School for an after-school teacher for archery. And then abolish the professional position at GV Middle School Assistant Principal effective January the 8th, 2014. Any questions?
Questions, if you want to. Just a clarification. Now, what if we had, if we had a substitute in the Valley of the Pool? Is it?
Yes.
Good job. Okay. If I have anything else on personnel and questions or comments or concerns? Not a call for question. All those in favor of the personnel section?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes? Yeah, it's an all yes vote on personnel. Okay. That brings us then to comments and concerns. I bet you'll comment when you can.
Okay. Well, one comment, I just wanted to let you know about the school closing tomorrow, and it's due to the buses. Jeff, did you get to that date?
Yeah, we have several buses there. So long starts. We've got a plan to tomorrow to address those issues, and hopefully be okay.
That's just because they're diesel buses, is that what I'm understanding, too?
They're every bus we have now, they're diesel buses.
And diesel fuel gets like, as you all know more than I do, but I've learned a lot in the last few days about diesel fuel and what happens to it.
You've got summer fuel and winter fuel, and apparently, I don't know for sure, but we may be running summer grade fuel.
Oh, now, Sid, I didn't know that.
Usually they switch over to preparing the winter grade fuel in November. I don't know that that's a problem. I know it's a problem up on farm.
Oh, okay. And it does, I mean, but who knew that we were going to get this type of, probably color, uh, vortex?
It sails up in this country. Some of the trucks set in the idle, it frees up a lot of running.
Well, that's what I learned, that-
It's just like molasses, it's, it's-
Yes.
So if you live north of the Basin Dixon, don't get diesel, definitely. Or maybe further down.
Right now, I think maybe some of the ones down south, I think they're very bad.
Love Pensacola, maybe.
Um, no.
But I'll have anything else? Okay, Mr. Wood, or Mr. McCalister, excuse me.
I would just like to call me in first, Ms. Lucas, and Brenda, and Jeff. I want to thank you all, and I don't think, I know you all's hearts in the right place. You all are moving the school system forward, and it's been an honor to work with you all, and I've learned a lot, and I enjoyed it, and I'm going to miss you, and thank you.
I appreciate you, yes, most definitely. As I said to you before the meeting, I certainly appreciate your comments and questions that, you know, that you have provided, you know, during the meetings and, you know, before. You have a perspective, you know, as each individual board member does, and I certainly appreciate it. And you've asked some great questions and made some really good comments and suggestions, and I'm going to miss you too. Enjoy having you.
You had a good work, my friend.
Sure has, sure has. I'd hope that you're continuing to lose weight. Good for you.
Carol, do you have anything to say?
Well, I just think Gary has added a lot to our team there, especially with our RPOs and things, construction-wise and things like that, he's been a real asset. We'll miss you, Gary.
Thank you. And to my fellow board members, it's been an honor to serve with you all. This is a very functional board. We respect each other. We don't always agree, but we always respect each other, and we always make decisions on what's best for the children, and it's been an honor to work with you all, and I know that you're all's hearts in the right place also. I'm very happy, I'm very proud to be with you all, and I will miss you as well, so the experience that I've got here from this board, hopefully, I will be taking that to Charleston next year and make some changes to better the school system.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And hopefully, next year, I'll be in contact with you a lot.
Well, should you be in Charleston, we want to know your number, and where you live.
And I'm going to expect to get lots of feedback.
And retired school employees will be up to this.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Be in red.
Together, we can work as a team.
Well, you're asking, I've really enjoyed having you sit beside a million kids a lot about this, that, and the other, but like you said, you've impressed me, you can show a very sincere concern for, for kids, and I think that's what it's all about. You've been easy to work with, and everybody, once again, we don't always agree, but we agree to disagree at times, but, you know, I've enjoyed having you on the board here, and you've told me a few things that makes me have a different perspective, and I appreciate that. So, going to miss you on here, but I'm not going to forget about you. I'm going to keep you in my mind so I can ask you things.
Thank you.
All right, okay.
Can I ask about the filling?
Well, I'm going to-
Sorry?
-talk about that, Sean, and then if you have any questions after that-
Thank you very much.
-I'll let you, okay. After talking to Gary this afternoon, I looked to see what our policy says, and, you know, we have a specific policy that where we seek those who are interested in serving, and we assumed that this would be one of those where the, someone would be appointed, we can appoint, we must appoint somebody within 45 days of the State Superintendent to do so. That person would serve until June the 30th, and then, it's our understanding that that position, that the final two years of Gary's term would be on the primary election ballot. So, with that said, what I'm suggesting is that we put a notice in the newspaper for the next two weeks, which would be the 15th and the 22nd, and also, and I'm sure Brenda will do that anyway, provide that information to the schools and others that typically would have an interest of, who might have an interest in serving. And then state that all applications of interest should be received by Friday, January the 24th at 4:00 PM. So I think that would give everybody, you know, that's a good two-week period of time for everybody to be advised that there is a vacancy, and if they're interested, that they must submit that to the President of the Board by January the 24th at 4:00 on Friday. I'm just, this is all right from our policy, so I'm reading as we go along here. Then, board members, I think we then have to decide how we want to have, we don't meet regularly the following week. Now, so, but we obviously are going to know how many applicants we have received or anything like that. On that Friday, I think we'll, I'll share that with all, you know, everybody will know who they are, and make that known to all the board members of who the applicants have been. But then, do we want to come back, like on Tuesday of the next week, the 28th, we don't meet that week? Do we want to come back and review the applications and then decide if we want to interview applicants? Do, or do we want to come in on the 28th? And also, even if we did it that way, we could always have an action item on there to appoint somebody, and if we weren't ready, we wouldn't have to, we'd just take it, but at least we'd be on our agenda as a possibility. The other would be, I guess what it gets down to is how many people apply, really is a major factor. If we find out on that Friday, the 24th, that, you know, three people apply or something, then we might just want to, on the 28th, say, we're going to ask all three of these people to come in, and then we'll interview them, and we'll try to appoint somebody that night. If there are 15 applicants, then maybe on Tuesday, the 28th, we've got to come in, review the applications, decide, narrow it down to the ones we may want to interview, do it another time. So I'm hoping that you're all suggestions.
Now, the person will have-
Now, the person will have to come from either District 1 or 2.
Yes, that's a good point. That'd be in our notes, too. Yeah, that's true. So, what do you all, are, is everybody okay with advertising it in the newspaper two weeks, and then the 24th being the final day at 4:00? Is everybody okay with that?
Final date for submission on 24th. That's what you're saying?
Sir, I'm sorry.
Submit, the final, the final date of submission label will be on the 24th at 4:00 P.M. Need on the 28th?
Well, okay, Carol, is that agreeable with you?
It is, and I think we do need to meet at least by the 28th to see who has applied and kind of review the applications.
Okay. Well, I just want to say, on the 24th, I will let all of you know who the applicants are.
Okay.
So, you know, we all know that. So now, we want to have a special meeting then on the 28th. Is that, I keep looking at you, Mr. McCounser, but you're not going to be sitting there. But, do we want to then meet on the 28th for a special meeting? Is that, is that day okay with everybody, that Tuesday?
Okay.
Unless they-
Because at that point, once again, and I'll talk with Brenda a little bit as we devise, develop our agenda, we may have an item on there where we actually appoint somebody, don't do it, but there's a, once again, depending on the number of applicants, it may be that we, on that Friday, when I share with you who all they are, we, you may say, well, heck, we only had four, let's just interview them, and on the 28th, and then pick somebody. But if we have a whole bunch, we may just have on the 28th just to review the applications and all, but see, we're not going to have people here to actually interview, so that would require us a couple of days later at some point to come back and interview and appoint somebody. So, I guess for right now, you just want to sit for the 28th, and then-
Well, I think so, Jeff.
Yeah, that's what, okay. And Carol, Sydney, 28th is good with that, or her, so. Okay, Sean, did you, is something there I haven't answered?
No, would that be, would you release the names to the paper on the Friday, do you think, or is that? I know that that was an issue when the superintendent was being interviewed. I know there was, do you release all the candidates or just the finalists? But I can't remember what the board appointments. I know when they came for interviews, was there, there was three, yeah, there, Mr., um-
Mullen.
Yeah, I remember, you know, that was kind of a public affair, shall we say, but-
Well, there's nothing in our policy that dictates that one way or the other. It's up to what you all want to do.
Well, I think we release themself.
Release all of them, or just one?
All of them. I mean, that should be put in the, should be put in the notice, that names will be released over the 1.
Everybody agree with that? Carol, you okay with that?
I would, I would, yeah.
Okay, so, and as, as, Paul, we'll put that in our notice, too, that all applicants, that your name will be released to the media, whoever would like to access it, but everybody know, everybody who's an applicant. Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up.
I think the lifetime of the recognition will-
I think it's, you know, it's different than that.
Wait, they're from, from which areas, 1 and?
1 and 3.
2.
1 and 2.
2 and 3. You got to think about me all these now.
You'd have thought they'd have gone in order, wouldn't you?
Yeah, you'd have thought so, yeah.
That applies to a lot of things.
We'll stick to this then. So Brenda, have you gotten everything we have to have in our notice and thing?
1 and 2. We're, Pete and I are in 3.
But we're in the middle. That's the odd part of it.
Is she, Harsh Creek's 1?
2.
2.
There are 2. Isn't Allen Creek area and the Harsh Creek area?
I know.
Allen Creek, I wonder, Yawkey is like 1. So you would think, like, the next one would be 2.
Yeah.
But it's not.
Somewhere around Griffithsville.
Right there at the school light, I think, is, yeah, to go into-
The west and the east one?
The east one, east one. Thank you.
You have to know which district you're fixing to light in.
That's right.
Time zone.
So one is in the Harsh District, another is inside, or the third district? That's right, now, it's a little confusing.
Some of theirs is 1, Harsh is 2, and here, how far down does-
See where you started.
I don't know where.
I know who started, it wasn't me.
Is it the west handle? Is it down the west handle?
Now, it goes, District 2 comes down to the back where Carol lives, doesn't Carol?
Carol's in 2.
They're on the back end.
Well, mine actually goes all the way to her.
Well, I'm saying, so from around near where your house is, up to Harsh is District 2.
Yes, I think so.
Does it come all the way, does it come all the way down to West Ham, or?
No, no. It's just, I'm not sure where, but somewhere-
Somewhere close to her house?
Near, in the vicinity of Carol's house is where the break-
Down around Dawn and Martin's house.
There you go. Just as an example.
Is it right for, I'm not sure for her, I see.
She lives on over there, so.
Okay.
And trying to figure out, because, you know, even on 4 mile, I think one side of the road is in one district, and the other, and I quit trying to figure that out, that's somebody else's baby. Okay. All right, so, anything else that we need to discuss now? Once again, Ms. McCounser, we're going to miss you, and hopefully, we'll get some good applicants, and we'll get somebody that's in filler shoes up there, though.
Do we still want the meeting on the 28th at 6:00, or would you consider it earlier time?
Up to you guys. Now, this, if we're not going to interview anybody, and all we're going to do is just look at the applications, it shouldn't be too lengthy, because the superintendent puts other stuff on there.
Sure.
Well, if we have a special meeting, we won't put anything else on there.
As long as it's not a work session, you're okay. Work session, you have four presentations.
If we decide after the 21st, we've got something we need to-
Yeah, that's why I'm-
It may not be a special meeting anymore.
I don't trust you, Tim.
Well, time, we just call an extra meeting.
You have to get it right before you-
I've learned with these days, you got to be careful. But at 6 o'clock, what do you all think? You want to just meet at 6:00, or you, what, were you thinking earlier, Carol?
I was thinking that if it's you, Brenda, and Trish, and I'm a chance to get home a little while there, I know they have the state delay, but I don't know how everybody as the schedule is, but I think most of us are retired.
We're back to retired doors.
For a long.
Come midnight tonight. Well, I don't have any problems with coming early, but the primary reason I like to come later is so that the public is involved, but they aren't going to be involved in this anyway.
Oh, Monday.
Tuesday's too late, anyway.
Oh, gosh, Monday's our deadline, 2 o'clock Monday, for news.
It doesn't matter, I just don't know.
What time do you, what time do you all want to do?
I don't remember.
Do you have a preference, Carol?
No, just any, any time that's good for you guys. Chris, that's good for you and Brenda, I feel like.
2 o'clock.
I thought you were giving me a peace sign.
Oh, okay, 2 o'clock.
2 o'clock.
Case of Brenda's bike.
Mr. Curry, 2 o'clock already?
That's fine, mate.
Okay, 2 o'clock on the 28th.
Sounds great.
I don't think I have anything to do.
I don't think I have anything.
Okay. Anything, any other comments, questions, concerns, please, from anyone? If not, then we'll ask from German until our next regular scheduled meeting, on January the 21st.
I'm leaving.
Ms. McCounser, need a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Curry? All yes?
Yes.
All yes, then.